To our annual celebration for Black History Month. As we know, Black History Month is a time that we get to focus on something that we appreciate and celebrate all 365 days throughout the year. Even though it's the shortest month, we recognize the importance of this month where several figures who have stood out in our community were born during this month and it also started out as Negro History Week, which was then expanded to Black History Month. So this is a time that we can come together, we can celebrate the rich tradition of our culture, and also celebrate the people who exemplify that culture as well. So with that being said, I wanted to start the program off, as we do with most of our programs, especially when we have a chance to come together as a family and have a chance to come together as a community by invoking the presence of the Lord. So I'm gonna ask that Reverend Lassner please join us here for an opening prayer.
Gracious Father, we give you the name, the praise, honor, and glory. We magnify you and we exalt you. Father, as freeholder, as Jehovah's Jehovah, we don't ask you to invoke the presence because you're already here. And we give you all the name, all the praise, honor, and glory. Thank you for this occasion, occasion for family to gather. We ask you to continue to bless this freeholder board, carry out the business of this county and this region. We ask for God for tonight, as family and those who be recognized as a special blessing for them as they continue, God, to do the work that you call them to do. Father, we ask for God even tonight, as we sit over here tonight, let your presence reign. Let your love, your harmony, and your peace be a radiating center in our lives as we continue to exemplify your love and your grace on our life. Now, we thank you for everything you're gonna do tonight, and we thank you for everything that you've already done, and we thank you most of all just for being God. In Jesus' name.
Amen. I'm gonna ask that everyone please remain standing as we have the wonderful students from the Bosa El Park School of Fine Arts to lead us in the Negro National Anthem. And as requested by Marsha Gunfrey, we're gonna do the entire rendition. Thank you, Marsha.
Sing a song, pull on the hope and the rain and the storm. There's been no rising sun, I'm what you gave me, God. Let my God fill this holy world. So we're all we try to the challenge. But in the day when I'm home, oh, I'm born and I die. And with the day, the day we're here, we're here in the day. The day which our fire is high. We have come, oh, we have seen and we've won. We have come, we're in our back, we're in our own glory. I'm from the duty, man, till now we stand up, man. Where the white people, but the star is there. There we go, we're in the sun, we're in the air, hallelujah. There we go, we're in the sun, we're in the air, hallelujah. There we go, we're in the sun, we're in the air, hallelujah. There we go, we're in the sun, we're in the air, hallelujah. Let my God fill this holy world.
Here from Bosa Parks, a little bit later, they're gonna do a couple more songs for us. If everyone has a good sense of smell, I think it's the fish that came out of the pot. Fry whiting, some fry whiting, and what else we got with the name? Okay, okay, alright, alright. So I'm just gonna let all of our presenters know that, you know, we do have a wonderful meal downstairs waiting for these outstanding individuals who came out to celebrate the accomplishments of the men and women from Passaic County who are here to celebrate today. So without further ado, we're gonna have our first presentation. I'm gonna ask that freeholder Assad Okter, please join me at the podium to present our first honoree, Captain Susan Barnes.
Whereas the month of February is designated as Black History Month, and whereas the recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional African-Americans over the years of Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Susan N. Barnes. And whereas Susan N. Barnes was born and raised in the city of Passaic, she earned a Bachelor's of Science in social work and a Master of Arts of Human Resources Training and Development of Police Studies from Seton Hall University for pirates. And whereas this Barnes presents Detective Captain, Commanding Officer, in the Passaic County Prosecutor's Office, where she served in the White Collar Crime Division, which is comprised of the Public Integrity Unit, IT Unit, Homeland Security Unit, Financial Crimes Unit, and the Insurance Quality Unit, she's investigated, participated thousands of investigations and arrests throughout her 26 years of service in the state county and beyond. Whereas Captain Barnes hired by the Passaic County Prosecutor's Office as a victim and witness advocate in 1993, where she assisted many victims, witnesses, and survivors as they navigated through the criminal justice system. Her assistance included being a liaison between the victims and the prosecutors, escorting them to court, explaining the details of court hearings, and providing information for services within the community. And whereas Detective Captain Barnes subsequently applied for a detective position within the office, and was hired as a detective in 1999, she successfully completed the police academy was and assigned to several units of prosecutor's offices, including the Domestic Violence Unit, Special Victims Unit, Narcotics Division, and the Financial Crimes Insurance Law Unit, where she was promoted to Sergeant. She was also attached to the Drug Enforcement Task Administration with the Task Force Office investigating high-level local and international drug organizations. She was scoring and promoted to Detective First Grade in 2007, Detective Sergeant in 2014, Detective Lieutenant in 2017, and Detective Captain in 2019. Whereas Captain Barnes is a member of the PBA Local 265, the New Christian Tabernacle Church, where she also serves as a trustee, and is a member of the Bronze Shields of Passaic County, serves as Vice President. And whereas Detective Captain Barnes has given unselfishly her time and energy to the community, which has earned the support of one and all who come in contact with her. And whereas Detective Captain Barnes has been involved in many cases throughout the county of Passaic, and she has brought honor and prestige not only to herself, but to Passaic County as well. And the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic would like to express its gratitude and appreciation to her for distinguished service to the community, now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Detective Captain Susan N. Barnes for her significant contribution she has made and the exemplary service she has unsophistically devoted to the community, and be further proclaimed by this Board of Chosen Freeholders. Sincere best wishes to her and continued success in all her future endeavors. Congratulations.
I believe, being strictly an honor to be honored during Black History Month. Black History Month is a month that is set aside to celebrate our history, my history. It's important to remember all of our ancestors who were kings and queens, our ancestors who were enslaved, the freedom fighters, the abolitionists, all the black creators, inventors, and all of the trailblazers before us. They fought and died for us so we could have an easier life. I'm grateful for the sacrifices they made in order for me to be able to stand before you as a free black woman, as a free black woman who was a captain in the Passaic County Prosecutor's Office. The Black History Month national theme for 2020 is African-Americans and the vote. My parents have always stressed the importance and the power of voting. They constantly reminded me that there was a time that we could not vote, and that I and we should not take this for granted. Although we've come a long way, we still have a long ways to go. I wanna leave you with a quote from Eleanor Roosevelt. I read it in a book recently, and it says, "No one can make you feel inferior without your consent. Be proud, be bold, be confident, no matter what pool or where you come from, even if you come from Patterson." Let's make it our goal to inspire, motivate, and educate. Thank you to my family, to my friends, to my prosecutor's office friends, to the Bronze Shields of Passaic County for your support. And congratulations to all the honorees today, and thank you again.
We also have our clerk Danielle Ireland-Imhoff, I'm gonna ask that she please join us as well. We have a proclamation for her.
I know TJ just introduced our county clerk Danielle Ireland-Imhoff. Our former freeholder and mayor of the great city of Passaic, Hectolora is with us as well. And I believe Sheriff Burdick is not feeling well and couldn't be here this evening, but he has sent some of his best men under Sheriff. Thank you. If I've missed anybody, forgive me.
You did. And thank you for stealing my thunder. I hope you're gonna do that, Tony. I appreciate it.
You stole my car. I still want to.
We also have with us the Honorable Judge Latoya Jenkins-Stewart, so I'm gonna say This year, every year, we try to do a theme, and we always venture away from the theme a little bit, but this year's theme was around law enforcement, as you can probably tell, or public safety, excuse me. And the next honoree is one of mine, so I'm gonna have my other follower to come up to make the next presentation to nothing other than Detective Corporal McCarver.
It's hard to tell, TJ, if I'm his other father, it's hard to start paying me back for all the college. It's every week, we're good. It's always good to do something with one of your friends, and she's an impressive, impressive woman. So whereas Margaret J. McCarver was born and raised in East Orange, she earned her BA in Communications from Uppsala College, she graduated from Passaic County Basic Corrections Academy, the Passaic County Basic K-9 Academy, Passaic County Basic Police Academy, PDC, and she is a recipient of the Morris County Police Academy School Resource Officer Certification and the Advanced School Resource Officer Course Certification. It's quite a lot. Whereas Margaret, a detective, corporal with the Passaic County Sheriff's Office, who has served Passaic County Sheriff's Office for the past 24 years, she has extensive experience with several divisions within the Passaic County Sheriff's Office, including Corrections, Courthouse Security, Patrol Community Policing, Traffic, and was a K-9 handler with the Accelerant Detection Dog named Rex. She is currently assigned to School Resource Officer for the Passaic County Technical Institute. And she follows. She starts to follow the eight other partners that say we're gonna run when we go up here so we don't get in trouble and do anything wrong. Whereas Margaret played sports as a kid and continues to play in her adult life, she formed her own team called New Jersey Storm, which is a law enforcement. She has police corrections, fire, and military players who participate in law enforcement basketball tournaments from state to state. Whereas Margaret was also a contender on a very popular television show, American Gladiators, in the early 1990s, where she made it to the semifinals in California. If you never knew that, I'd be nicer to you. Whereas Margaret J. McCarver has given unselfishly her time and energy to the community, which has earned her the respect of one and all who come in contact with her. And whereas Margaret McCarver has been involved in many causes throughout the county of Passaic, she has brought honor and prestige not only to herself, but to Passaic County as well. And the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic would like to express its gratitude and appreciation to her for distinguished service of the community. And before I do this, I missed one thing that she did. She created a Battle of the Badges, which allows officers from other states to play competitive basketball while honoring fallen brothers and sisters of blue and their families. The organization donates book bags to youth, projects scholarships to students for college, and provides numerous donations throughout the community. Anyway, now, it therefore be proclaimed that the Board of Chosen Freeholders in the County of Passaic that it hereby publicly recognizes you and applauds you for the significant contributions that you made and the exemplary service you have done, so she voted.
So I did have a speech prepared, however, I'm just gonna speak right from the heart. It's an honor to receive this award. I'm very happy. I work hard, people don't always take notice, but I do it from my heart, not because I'm looking for an award or anything like that to get back to people. I've been assigned, well, I'm with the Sheriff's Department, starting my 25th year in April. I appreciate everybody that's back there, the brass supporting me. I'm starting my 10th year at PCTI soon as well. I'm in the hallways all the time with the kids, and I'm there just to, you know, for security purposes, but I'm also there as a parent, as an aunt, as a sister. I give advice, I help them when their job's coming about to let them know, hey, guys, take the application, take the test, so that you wanna make a difference in the world, that you have that opportunity. You know, there's not a lot of African-Americans that are taking the test as they were before, and if you wanna make a difference, you gotta get in there and change things. And they're back here as well to support me. Everything that I try to do, I always get them involved, and they're always there to have my back. I started the Battle of the Badges so that we could give back, you know. It's just me and my family and a couple coworkers, we all do it for nothing. We do it because we wanna support the families that may need help. We get the book bags away, the kids that wanna, you know, need to have something for school, and we just do this because we wanna be able to give back to people, not because we're looking for anybody to acknowledge us, it's just because it's from our hearts. So I wanna thank everybody that's out here to support all the honorees and myself, and I appreciate it.
Assemblywoman, would you like to join us, please?
I wanna say one other thing. I wanna thank the freeholders for always supporting me from the very start when I started the Battle of the Badges six years ago. TJ, Sandra, Ruth, they're always there, they always come to all the games and supported us, and I wanna thank you guys for always helping.
Who else we got in here? Come on. We'll send you a picture from wherever.
Rob.
TJ's giving me a microphone. That's tough to get a mic from the way TJ, you know, he loves that, and it's not camera shot. So I wanna congratulate all the honorees. It's a distinct honor, a pleasure to be able to read one to one, but we have a fire pattern of Passaic Fireman Sean Patrick. The month of February has been designated as Black History Month, and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional African-Americans over the years, the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Sean Patrick Allen Senior. And whereas Sean Patrick Allen Senior was born and raised in the city of Passaic, he attended Passaic Public School System, graduated from Passaic High School. Thereafter, he enlisted in the United States Army and was later honorably discharged. He was appointed to the Passaic Fire Department in January 1995. Whereas Sean Patrick Allen Senior has secured and maintained several certifications, named as firefighter level two. You on Tom's schedule here? You all right? You all right? Do you smell smoke? Is that even? Firefighter level two, New Jersey Division of Criminal Justice, Arson Investigation, hazmat technical fire official and first responder. He's currently the Vice President of the Passaic FMBA Local 13 Union. And whereas Sean Patrick Allen Senior is committed and very active in the community service to the city of Passaic, he has sponsored and coached Little League teams and umpired baseball and softball for the Passaic Recreation Department. He has been an annual participant of the Fire Department Center Run, he annually sponsors a high school student to attend the senior prom, and more. And whereas Sean Patrick Allen Senior is a recipient of citations and awards for his community service, including New Jersey Legislature Senate and General Assembly Citation, VFW National Firefighter, One of Passaic, and Albert Lawson Post 10117, NAACP Community Service, Passaic African-American Celebration Committee Outstanding Service Award, busy boy, huh? Optimist Community Service Award, Deputy Chief Leon Prukowski Humanitarian Award, City of Passaic Certificate of Outstanding Service, and Passaic Recreation Mayor's Cup. Whereas Sean Patrick Allen Senior is a member of the NAACP Passaic Branch, Passaic County Arson Investigation Association, Burton County Fire Prevention Association, Passaic Optimist Organization, Silver Star Masonic Lodge of Passaic, and Coliana, Coliana Temple. You wanna read the resume? Whereas Sean Patrick Allen has given unselfishly his time and energy to the community, which has earned him the respect of one and all who come into contact with him. Whereas Sean Patrick Allen Senior has been involved in many cases, causes throughout the county of Passaic, and he has brought honor and prestige not only to himself, but to Passaic County as well. And the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic would like to express its gratitude and appreciation for his distinguished service to the community. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Sean Patrick Allen Senior for the significant contributions he has made, exemplary service he has unsophistically devoted to the community, and contributions he has made. Be further proclaimed that this Board extends its sincere best wishes to Sean Patrick Allen Senior for his continued success in all his future endeavors. Congratulations.
I wanna thank God for creating a strong, young, black man like myself. This is Black History Month, and you know, I just completed 25 years with the Passaic City Fire Department. Whereas, whereas I wasn't supposed to, because I got the phone call 25 years ago saying I wasn't gonna get the job. So due to one of the family members, they skipped me. But I called someone, my pastor, got a lawyer involved, and guess what? I completed 25 years, and when the chief interviewed me, he said, "I'm gonna give you this job, but I want you to be a trove maker down the road." 25 years, I never had no kind of discipline over me. That's all about a strong will of God, you know, and I dedicated myself to the children of the city of Passaic. And I know you mentioned that, about the prom situation, my mother couldn't afford to send me to my prom. So I dedicated myself that if any individual man needs to go to a prom in the city of Passaic, I was gonna sponsor their ticket, their tuxedo, and everything. And I did that for about 10 years. And I stand here today, and I am also the Passaic NAACP President. I took that job, and because we all gotta start working together. No one's gonna forget what happened to them in slavery, no Jew's gonna forget what happened to the Holocaust, okay? You're not gonna forgive, you're not gonna forgive, but we gotta work together for everybody to succeed in life. So on that note, I'm gonna thank the freeholders for giving me this honor today, this award. is going to make the presentation.
I am so excited to present this award to Rodney, because any of you know Rodney, he is like melting right now. He is one of the most humble people you ever meet, but he does so much for everyone. And, you know, Morgan, as you said, tech, you know, you always have an ear for the kids. I know that's the same with Rodney, his heart is really with that school and with the kids and helping them as much as he can. I'm just so happy to be doing this. And so I am going to read the proclamation, but you all who know Rodney already know a lot of what I'm going to read, but if you don't know Rodney, you'll learn something. Whereas the month of February has been designated as Black History Month and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional African Americans over the years, the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic deems fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Rodney DeBoer. Whereas Rodney DeBoer, a lifelong resident of Patterson, attended Patterson Public School Number 10 and Eastside High School. He had originally desired to study law, but while attaining his undergraduate degree at William Patterson College, he began substitute teaching at Eastside High School and realized he had a passion for helping young people make a difference in their lives through education. He changed his major from political science to a double major of English and history and earned his degree in 1991. Whereas Rodney DeBoer began his career as a teacher at Eastside High School, he is currently employed at Passaic County Technical Institute. He had in the past taught history, English, and literature, but now serves as a discipline coordinator slash dean of students at PCTI with an enrollment of over 3,800 students. Whereas Rodney DeBoer served as local chapter president of the Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Inc. and currently serves as executive director of the New Jersey Association of Alphas. He is an ordained elder of Olivia Good Shepherd Church in Patterson, and he has served in many capacities in his local parish. Whereas Rodney DeBoer is a proud son and product of Patterson's fourth ward who overcame poverty and fulfilled the promises of education. He faithfully serves the community by assisting with monthly feedings of the homeless in conjunction with the First AME Zion Church. And whereas Rodney DeBoer, whose desire and natural inclination to become a role model and community leader, was nurtured when he became a father. He knew he wanted to teach his children and their peers the necessary skills to succeed in his hometown and county and to continue being a leader for the next generation. And whereas Rodney DeBoer has given unselfishly of his time and energy to the community, which has earned him the respect of one and all who've come into contact with him. And whereas Rodney DeBoer has been involved in many causes throughout the county of Passaic, and he has brought honor and prestige not only to himself, but to Passaic County as well. And the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic would like to express its gratitude and appreciation to him for his distinguished service to the community. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Rodney DeBoer for the significant contributions he has made and the exemplary service he has unselfishly devoted to the community. And be further proclaimed that this board extends its sincere best wishes to Rodney DeBoer for his continued success in all his future endeavors.
What shall we say to these things? If God be for us, who can be against us? It's very difficult to stand here and read or listen to your name, be told about how or what you've done. My wife is laughing at me the entire time I was sitting there because I'm not used to being on this side of the podium. As Mam Director said, I'm used to the one either giving the award or making sure I'm your hype man, pushing you to do what you need to do. I'm usually in the back, helping someone else succeed or someone else get what they're supposed to get. But I thank you, Passaic County Freeholders, Battle Freeholders, my fraternity brother, my little brother, for this award. Very humbling, very humbling. As Mr. Allen said, I'm going into my 29th year of education, and I never thought I would actually stand here and have a career. Growing up in a fourth ward, you didn't see many career-oriented individuals, let alone black men. So I knew that in order to not stay where I was, I had to do something. And the first thing I did was make sure I knew how to say please and thank you. So I thank you to my mother, who taught me those three words, or those two words, or those phrases, because for the third grade education, she didn't have much, but she gave me what she had. And for that, I'm where I am right now. I thank you to my wife, Dr. DeBor, who I met when I was 14, and she pretty much pushed me to do what I needed to do to become the man I am. I always doubted myself in a sense of, I didn't have role models per se, but people were in my life that knew what to instill in me, what to pour in me. I look out the audience and realize there are a lot of people that I encountered that have touched me. I walked in and saw my Sunday School teacher, Ms. Bonds, and it just threw me for a loop because she's the kind of people, or kind of person that in my early age, just kept feeding into me. I look out and I see my big brother, Kenny Sumter, who grew up in St. Luke. We both were quiet introverted, and believe it or not, I have a speech impediment, but God has a sense of humor, demeaning me an educator and a preacher. Because he put those impediments in me, I had to lean on him for strength and determination. Everyone that I encountered in my life, I sit in this audience, see my fraternity brothers. When I became an Alpha, as Kenny said, I said, "How do you do those things? How do you get out and speak in public?" He says, "Alpha taught me." So I stand here as an Alpha Man, as the executive director of all New Jersey Alphas, because someone instilled in me what to do and gave me the right direction. Seek ye first to kingdom of heaven and everything you want, because everyone has their own mantra, their own singing. My singing is Romans 8:28. All my good, all my bad, everything I went through works together to put me here today. So follow your dreams, follow your spirit, and most importantly, follow God. Thank you.
Chief Anelis, Kenny Sumter, Alpha Phi Fraternity, go ready. Hold on, Alpha's on the floor. So I want to thank everybody for coming out. I also wanted to acknowledge B.B. Garcia from Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill's office, who also brought congressional recognition for all of our honorees. So you got the county, you got the state, and now you got the federal government. So you got, we got our four, we're going to all. That being said now, I want to turn it over to the wonderful students of Rosa L. Parks, bonded performing arts, who are going to do a few selections for us. And then we're going to have the fool blessed by none other than the great mayor of the city of Passaic, Mayor Hector Laura, and he knows that he's standing in between you and the fool, so he's trying to get rid of you. So thank you all, I'll turn it all to you now.
Before we do this song, it might need a little explanation. Do any of you remember a group from the 60s called The Ad Libs? They had a hit with a song called "Away From New York City."
Yeah, come on. Yeah, of course we know.
Technically, this may or may not be a Black History song. I personally think it is. They were one of the great vocal groups of the 60s, but the reason we're doing it, I'd like you all to see, these two young ladies who are going to sing the lead part, this is Tamera and Zania, they were the two shyest freshmen I ever had, and this is what they've transformed into, and I think you'll be, they're seniors and I'm going to cry for you.
(Singing) Ooh ah, ooh ah, cuckoo kid, just about the boy from New York City. Ooh ah, ooh ah, come on kid, just about the boy from New York City. He's really fine, someday I hope he'll make him mine, oh my. And he's pretty sweet, and just the way he looked at me, he's held me up by feet. Oh, he's, you ought to come and see how he walks, and how he talks. Ooh ah, ooh ah, cuckoo kid, just about the boy from New York City. He's really dumb, and he's the one. He has the finest mint house I've ever seen in town. And he's cute, and his long hair too, and he keeps his pockets full of love and then new. Ooh, he's, you ought to come and see his true little star and his brand new car. Every time he says he loves me, she'll run down my spine. Every time he wants to kiss me, oh, he makes me feel so fly. Oh, yeah. Ooh ah, ooh ah, cuckoo kid, just about the boy from New York City. But he can dance, he can dance, take a chance. Yeah, make my head, and it's baby, it's sweet. That's when I fell in love, just one night. He was shy, and so was I. And now I know I'll never, never say goodbye. Ooh, he's, you ought to come and see his new little star and his brand new car. Every time he says he loves me, she'll run down my spine. Every time he wants to kiss me, oh, he makes me feel so fly. Oh, yeah. Ooh ah, ooh ah, cuckoo kid, just about the boy from New York City. But he can dance, he can dance, take a chance. Yeah, make my head, and it's baby, it's sweet. That's when I fell in love, just one night. He was shy, and so was I. And now I know I'll never, never say goodbye. Ooh, he's, you ought to come and see his new little star and his brand new car. Every time he says he loves me, she'll run down my spine. Every time he wants to kiss me, oh, he makes me feel so fly. Oh, yeah. Ooh ah, ooh ah, cuckoo kid, just about the boy from New York City. Talking about the boy, the boy from New York City. Oh, he's fine, so old to make him mine. Ooh ah, ooh ah, come on kid, just about the boy from New York City. All right.
I really love these guys, all of them. But these two probably didn't say one word to me for the freshman and sophomore year. So amazing, and they've turned out to be two of the best performers we've ever had at the school. And I'd like to acknowledge our background singers, that's Naviana, Jazzy, I can't remember his name, oh, Jazzy, Carlos, Ivan, and Ariana. Okay, our next song is a Black History song, well, really that was too. Do you guys remember The Ad Libs though, now that you heard the song? They were just a great group. So you all know who Elvis Gerald is, of course, right? In my opinion, one of the great- Ooh, we say he loves to come and see his true little star and his brand new car. Every time he says he loves me, she'll run down my spine. Every time he wants to kiss me, oh, he makes me feel so fly. Oh, yeah. But he can dance, take a chance. Yeah, make my head. And it's baby, don't sleep. That's when I fell in love, took one man. Still talking and cool. He was shy and so unloved. And now I know I'll never, never say goodbye. Ooh, we say he loves to come and see his new love. From cold to cold.
I really love these guys, all of them. But these two probably didn't say one word to me for the freshman and sophomore year. So amazing. And they've turned out to be two of the best performers we've ever had at the school. And I'd like to acknowledge our background singers. That's Naviana. I can't remember his name. Oh, Jasir Carlos. Ivan and Ariana. Okay, our next song is a fine piece for the song, well, really that was too. Do you guys remember The Ad Libs though, now that you heard the song? They were just a great group. So you all know who Ella Fitzgerald is, of course, right? In my opinion, one of the greatest singers, if not the greatest jazz singer of this century. I was lucky enough to see her in a concert. I won't tell you what year it was, but it was her last concert. And I got to meet her after the concert, a wonderful woman. So we're doing this song in honor of her because this song is an actual scat, the improvised part, that she did on a verb recording with Count Basie's Big Band. So what we sing here is actually Ella Fitzgerald's scat. Only the arranger starts out in unison, and then it goes to four parts during the scat. I can tell you, it's extremely hard to do this. And we spent a lot of time tuning these parts and trying to get them really tight. And when we performed this at NJT Arts, I gotta put a plug in here. So we're a school of 250 kids. And we're competing against schools that are 1,000 to 2,000 kids. And we were one of the only schools that was rated distinguished in every category. This is Sweet Georgia Brown, interpreted by the Rosa Parks Chorus, and originally sung by Ella Fitzgerald. Are you guys hungry? Because we could do one more.
I've been on walking with the Lord for many a day. Nothing gonna stumble, stumble my feet. Trying to abide in the straight and narrow way. Nothing gonna stumble, stumble my feet. But when my time on earth is done. And I hear my name. Oh, when my time on earth is done. These weary feet are gonna not gonna stumble. Not gonna trip, not gonna stumble. No, I'm not gonna slip. No, nothing gonna stumble, stumble my feet. When I go to walk that golden street. Now the devil is a liar and a cheater too. Nothing gonna stumble, stumble my feet. And if he gets his way. He'll make a sinner out of you. Nothing gonna stumble, stumble my feet. But if you listen for the Spirit's voice. In the moment of truth. Oh, if you listen for the Spirit's voice. He'll help you make the right choice. Not gonna stumble. Not gonna trip, not gonna stumble. No, I'm not gonna slip. No, nothing gonna stumble, stumble my feet. When I go to walk that golden street. That golden street. Not gonna weaver. Walter. Sway or fall. Not gonna stumble or slide. Not gonna weaver. Walter. Sway or fall. Not gonna stumble at all. Not gonna stumble. Not gonna trip, not gonna stumble. No, I'm not gonna slip. No, nothing gonna stumble, stumble my feet. When I go to walk that golden street. Not gonna stumble. Not gonna trip, not gonna stumble. No, I'm not gonna slip. No, nothing gonna stumble, stumble my feet. When I go to walk that golden street. No, not gonna stumble. Not gonna trip, not gonna stumble. No, I'm not gonna slip. No, nothing gonna stumble, stumble my feet. When I go to walk that golden street. That golden street. Not gonna stumble. Not gonna trip. Not gonna stumble. That golden street. That golden street. That golden street. That golden street. Not gonna slip. When I go to walk that golden street. Not gonna stumble, stumble my feet.
Again, that is under the direction of Mr. Chapman. Thank you so much, sir. Thank you. The Reverend Mayor Hector Laura pulled us out. I do want to just thank the outstanding staff that we have here working in our Freehold's office. Obviously, our, so, yeah, I'm using my teachers earlier. We have Louis Inhofe, who really does an amazing job putting this together, as well as all of the young ladies who work in our office. Thank you so much. Lisa, Marquesha, and Jasmine, you guys do an amazing job.
Questioner, you are Lord King of the University of Heaven. Lord, we thank you for the amazing talent of the youth of our community. What a blessing to see your light shine through them. We thank you for this fantastic program where remarkable, strong men and women who are leading in their fields can be leaders and that the youth can see them and follow their steps. We thank you, Lord, for the gift of today. For we know that what is done today in the present becomes tomorrow's history. And we thank you for the opportunity to gather together in your glorious name to honor and recognize Black history, which is truly American history and even more so world history, Lord. We thank you for the gift of every new day. We ask you to bless Freehold to TJ Best and this Freehold Board and all those who work here. We thank you for the food that we are about to receive. We ask, Lord, that you would bless the hands that prepared it, those that will serve it, and that we would receive it with humble and grateful hearts and it would be nourishment to our bodies and fill our souls with great joy as the songs in this program have done. And as always, I repeat where I began, Lord, we give you thanks for your glorious and mighty. And we ask that you would watch over the youth of these leaders and all of us that your providential guidance will lead us closer to where you want to be. We give you glory in your great, mighty, and wonderful name in the name of Jesus. Amen.
That's a Black prayer. I've heard one. Thank you. I encourage everyone to go downstairs, enjoy the food. We're going to continue with our heating here. If you would like to hang around, you're more welcome to do so. But we do have food of refreshment downstairs. Thank you.
Q54, Resolution Amending R. 2019-1240, Decided Date December 3, 2019, and approved through Qualification Regulations, authorizing a board hearing for advertisement and solicitation of fees for the Lever Castle and Creations Restoration Project, care of that resolution, added security as required by NJSC. There's also a personnel agenda that has been distributed. And there's no need for any corrections.
Have a motion to adjourn the conference agenda.
Preholders, Arthur, Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lozera.
Yes.
We move back to the consent agenda cabinet announcement of the open public meeting law.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the public meeting law has been satisfied with respect to being specified in the time, date, and location filed with the County Club, Department of Administration, and published in both the Record and the Herald News. Provisions are all up.
Thank you. Roll call.
Preholders, Arthur, Bartlett, Best.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
James.
Here.
Deputy Director, before. Director Lozera.
Here.
I stand for the invocation, please.
We'll use all the prayers that All right.
A pledge of allegiance.
Will you show me a pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and the jury of all the forge stands. One nation under God. In thy name, thou shalt live, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for the people of the United States. Thank you. Have a motion to approve the minutes of February 11. James and Duffy.
Preholders, Arthur.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy, uh, sorry, Director Lozera.
Yes. Have a motion to approve the proclamations.
James and Arthur. Preholders, Arthur.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lozera.
Yes.
Have a motion to suspend the regular order of business.
I have a motion.
Duffy, I'll second it.
Second.
Uh, Best.
I can't.
Preholders, Arthur.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lozera.
Yes. Okay, bond ordinance 2020-01.
Bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and acquisitions of the new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new additional furnishings, new communication and signal system, equipment and new information technology and telecommunications equipment in, by, and for the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $10 million to pay for the cost thereof, to make a down payment, to authorize the issuance of bond, bonds to finance such appropriations and to provide for the issuance of bonds, appreciation anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on bond ordinance 2020-01?
I have a motion.
Sorry. Duffy and Best.
Preholders, Arthur.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Director Lozera.
Yes.
Does anyone present desire to be heard on bond ordinance 2020-01?
See, no one's voting. I'm going to move to close the public portion.
Duffy, Arthur. Preholders, Arthur.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Director Lozera.
Yes.
And have a motion to adopt bond ordinance 2020-01.
Preholders, Arthur.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Director Lozera.
Yes.
And we move on to bond ordinance 2020-02.
Bond ordinance to authorize the undertaking of various public improvements for the Passaic County Community College in and by and for the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $3,200,000 to pay the cost thereof, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriations and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Have a motion to open the public hearing on bond ordinance 2020-02.
Second.
James and Best. Preholders, Arthur.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Director Lozera.
Yes.
And does anyone present desire to be heard on bond ordinance 2020-02?
See, no one's voting. I'm going to move to close the public portion.
Motion to, oh, sorry.
Preholders, Arthur.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Director Lozera.
Yes.
Have a motion to adopt bond ordinance 2020-02.
James and Arthur. Preholders, Arthur.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Director Lozera.
Yes.
Bond ordinance 2020-03.
Bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new information technology and telecommunications equipment, new additional furnishings, new communication and signal system equipment, and new automotive vehicle and new fire truck, including original apparatus and equipment for the Passaic County Community College in, by, and for the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $2,390,452 to pay for the cost thereof, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriations and to provide for issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on bond ordinance 2020-03?
I move.
Best and Arthur. Preholders, Arthur.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Director Lozera.
Yes.
Does anyone present desire to be heard on bond ordinance 2020-03?
See, no one's voting. I'm going to move to close the public portion.
Duffy and Arthur. Preholders, Arthur.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lozera.
Yes. Have a motion to close the public hearing on bond ordinance 20... To adopt, I'm... No, it says... Oh, I'm sorry, I was getting one. Motion to adopt bond ordinance 2020 dash zero three.
Second.
No, James and Apter. Freeholder, Apter.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Director Lozara.
Yes. Have a motion to resume the regular order of business.
Apter, James. Freeholders, Apter.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Director Lozara.
Yes. Freeholder reports. I just want to congratulate TJ. You did a great job tonight.
Thank you.
Very nice.
I didn't do homework, but I want to thank our amazing staff. They really are awesome. And the students, man, they get better and better. And I just, yeah, these kids, I mean, we've been working with them. Like, this group had been here the last four years. So, I remember them when they were freshmen. And just to see them grow as students and into adults. They were very shy the first year, and now they're like, you know, they're not shy anymore. They're not shy. So, I love these kids. It's going to be tough to see them grow, but I'm encouraged about the next group that's coming behind them.
Anybody else?
I have a report that I want to meet with the Greenwood Lake Commission tomorrow night in New York about the drawdown. Our candidates come out and supported not to draw it down only because of lack of... The snow or rain this winter. New York evidently has over warming support too to that. So, I got to go over there and tell them that we have a proclamation coming. We are not... We are not in support of the drawdown. So, if I'm not back next meeting, would somebody come look for me? So, and only because they're afraid if they draw it down, we don't get enough snow or rain. There's no snow or rain in the mountains now that if we may be able to replenish the... And based on what happened last summer with the algae and... And for that, we often third rate. And Greenwood Lake is deeper than I think we know. I'm sure they're not. That in New Jersey, we were, we were, man-made, Greenwood Lake. Greenwood Lake dug it out, that's why we have all those trees and stuff. So, and all your muscles, I mean, dug it out and very impressed by that. It's not bad, I'm sure. But that's all I have to report. I'm happy to hear that we, I spoke to, uh, User and Tom Conway from the environmental commission. They're very... Uh, users, ten users up there.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Okay, communications are none. Uh, motions?
I did want to mention one thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We had the last page, so it's hard to pod you, but I just...
We can never pass you this.
Uh, tomorrow, we have a human services meeting. When we meet, we're going to be talking about the coronavirus. I think that our national view of this has changed since we had our first meeting on this. And everything I can read, it is actually time to be concerned about what we will do in this coming, what our reaction's going to be. I know in northern Italy, stores don't have food. They have logistics problems getting food to people. Uh, and I think it's... I'm worried that our response is not going to be adequate unless we really plan for it. And I think we have, uh, we have a nursing home that if we get quarantined, we're going to have to, how do we get food to people who are on the wheels? Um, we need a plan. And I don't think anybody doubts that the infection is coming to the United States and it's not going to be dealt with any differently than it is in any other country. I don't think it has anything to do with our number of hospitals or anything else. We may fare better on infection, but I don't think we're going to fare any better than the number of people that get infected. And I think that's pretty much the national, uh, the Seattle comment right now. So, if you don't mind, tomorrow, we will be talking about this and see if we can come up with a plan. And sooner, uh, you're going to be there too, so we will try.
Thank you. Okay. Communications are none. Uh, motion to open the public portion of the meeting? Anyone wishing to be heard, come on up to the podium. Stay you... Oh, sorry.
Freeholders, Apter.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lozara.
Yes. No, I just moved forward. Uh, hi, Ian.
Hi, good evening. Renee Alastair of West Milford. Um, I was on autopilot coming down here today. Retired from the county, almost two years now. Um, but I'm here to thank the freeholders, the administration, my coworker, Dr. Goodgill, my former coworker, Dr. Goodgill, and friend. Um, I did see Ken Simpson here earlier, you know, so I want to thank the DTW. I guess he's down here. Um, for stopping the spraying of Ranger Pro in West Milford. And I'm hoping, you know, we're going to, um, sustainable West Milford. We're going to help the township to monitor, um, the vegetation, the growth this year. And hopefully, we will be able to stop permanently the spraying in, uh, of a poison, which we all really consider a poison. Um, and hopefully, going forward, that we won't be spraying the rest of the county with Ranger Pro. Um, I know this is a pilot program this year. Um, the comment that Mr. Duffy made about Greenwood Lake is really important because I live in Upper Greenwood Lake. And they drew it down this year, and it's still drawn down. It's like, it's mud. So, I have concerns because it really haven't had the snow or the rain that we normally get, you know, and I'm on a mountain. So, if it's going to snow in West Milford, it's going to snow in Upper Greenwood Lake. Uh, and then, um, I'm happy that Freeholder, um, James brought up the, the coronavirus because I'm supposed to be going to Italy next month in April for my birthday. I don't think, I don't, I think we're going to have to cancel because I'm going to be going to Milano. So, unfortunately. But, you know, I'm concerned that coming here, I have, you know, I have an immune problem myself. So, for people my age, older, or for young children, you know, I do have concerns for my grandchildren. You know, this is Canada. I have to bring out all the masks. So, um, anyway, thank you very much. And going forward.
Thank you.
Sorry, yeah.
Maybe you all...
Formal standing. Thank you, everybody. Now I'm going to go home.
Neil Ross, Ten Orchards, U. Passaic. I didn't hear you guys announce the three-minute time limit, so I guess technically I can go on, but I won't. Uh, I enjoyed this wonderful program we had earlier this evening. Uh, actually, I wasn't even supposed to be here. I was scheduled to be elsewhere. I had a meeting to go to. Uh, I'm here on my own behalf as a private citizen, so I won't mention the organization. But it was supposed to be a meeting tonight. 2:55 PM, I get a call from Paratransit to confirm I'm attending. 3:07, they canceled because they don't have a driver. So, myself and other people who are going to be on that Paratransit vehicle were going to that meeting tonight at very short notice. The people that are taking Essex County Paratransit were going to be there. The speaker will be heard by them. The program that is taking place will be heard by others. But the people that are lining up in Passaic County Paratransit are not going to be there. Uh, there's got to be a better way. If they're short on drivers, they should know it more than two hours before the event takes place. Maybe a day or two in advance, if they were going to make other arrangements. Staff people are there, a speaker's coming in to speak. And to have this happen just abruptly. October, I had a similar incident. I'm outside waiting in the cold in front of my building, freezing, and it's after hours because there's none of the call. I find out the next day. The driver claimed she was there. Apparently, she was new, didn't know the route or where people lived. So, only if anyone got picked up, it was only half the people on the vehicle. Uh, nothing's perfect in this world. Paratransit has a lot of responsibility. But there's got to be a better way to do things where things are not just canceled abruptly. I'm not the only one affected. Other people are. People attending the programs, people sponsoring the programs. Uh, and just to have this abruptly where they don't know if a driver present or not at 3:07 PM of the day of an event. Something's got to be done. Thank you very much.
Freeholders, Apter. Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. And Director Lozara.
Yes. Q one. Have a motion to accept Q one?
Second.
Freeholders, Apter.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Director Lozara.
Yes. Have a motion to... A motion to add Q fifty-three and Q fifty-four.
Let me make that motion. Second.
Freeholders, Apter.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Director Lozara.
Yes. I want to have a motion to accept, uh...
Apter. If I may, through you before we vote on the consent agenda, I just ask the freeholders if there's any resolutions that you want to vote on individually that you can just identify them now and enter into a motion to pull them off so that there can be a separate talus or consent agenda is in fact a consent agenda?
I have a motion to accept the consent agenda in Q one through Q fifty-four.
One more. Second.
Freeholders, Apter.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Director Lozara.
Yes. Uh, have a motion to accept the personnel.
I have a motion to add the, the, uh...
Oh, have a motion to add the addendum to the personnel file?
Second.
Apter and Best. Yes, I'm sorry. Freeholders, Apter.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lozara.
Yes. Have a motion to accept the personnel agenda?
One more.
James and Apter. Freeholders, Apter.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James. Director Lozara.
Yes. Have a motion to accept the bills.
Freeholders, Apter.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lozara.
Yes. Have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Freeholders, Apter.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Director Lozara.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.